Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us. I would remind you that we record these sessions for broadcast on our district YouTube page, so if you go to YouTube and look up Pasco Schools, you can watch these along with our board meetings, all open public meetings that we hold, our broadcast on YouTube, and also on Charter Cable TV, Channel 191. We're excited this afternoon to have a report on the College and Career Readiness or Ready Initiative progress report, and we're excited that so many district staff could join us this afternoon, and thank you for your parts, those of you who've contributed to both the program and to this presentation. We have Suzanne. We have Suzanne Hall. Ms. Hall is going to lead us in this study session.
Okay, wonderful. Well, good afternoon, Board President Lehrman, Superintendent Whitney, and members of the Board. And I have my wonderful team here. We feel like we're family. We've been together almost a year and a half now, working hard on this initiative, and we're looking forward to giving you an update today. We'll be updating you on the work that occurred over the summer, no rest for the weary, and what the Phase 1 implementation will look like for the class of 2021 this fall. So just to give you an overview, over the course of the summer, all five workgroups were busy and put in extensive hours. The intervention team met every Monday and Thursday in July and in August. Culture and Communications met with the Public Affairs Office to design our communication plan. Our high school and our middle school counselors convened to develop a cohesive secondary guidance system, and advisory lessons were developed, and the master scheduling team, with 12 people from both high schools and middle representatives, middle school representatives worked extensive hours as well. I would just like to thank our leads for each of these teams. They put in a ton of hours planning the agendas and making these effective use of people's time and very productive. Our goal was also to have close collaboration with the association, and we wanted to make sure that each of these workgroups were open to all high school teachers, and anyone who was interested was able to participate. We had a focus on making sure there was a balanced representation from each of the high schools as well. We would like this study session with you to be interactive, informal, and we're prepared after each group presents to hear your questions or suggestions in moving forward. And so with that, I would like to introduce the leads for the Communication Planning Team, which is Melanie Bockhardt and Marcy White.
Hello. I'm Marcy White. I teach Social Studies at Pasco High School. And Melanie?
I'm Melanie Bockhardt. I teach Science at Chihuahua.
So we are the leads of the Culture and Communications Team, and throughout this summer, we have been working on establishing more open communication and determining a process for communicating all of the changes that are going to be taking place over the school year and in the years to come with our parents, our students, and our community. So the first tool that we created and have sent out to parents looks like this. It is being printed, hopefully copies for you all also, but it is essentially a very brief overview of the information that parents need that pertains to what changes will be coming for their students this year for our ninth graders. So it explains the legislative shift that brought us to 24 credits. It explains what the district has done and is doing, and it also gives an indication of what the new credit requirements will be for the class of 2021. So it is a very brief, broad overview for parents. It's Spanish and English, and it went out last week. So that was our first method of communication. The second is a student-focused video that we created with Pasco High and Chihuahua students for our freshmen to view next...
Tuesday.
Tuesday, on their first day of class. So students will watch the video. It will also be shared later this week with the staff from Pasco and Chihuahua High so that we know that everybody is getting a common message, and this is a...
So was that mailed to the freshmen?
This, yes, went out in the mail last week for all parents. And this is a preview of the video.
So what does that really mean for you? So it means you'll need a total of 24 credits to graduate. Let's bring it down. For every class you take, you earn half a credit per semester.
That means when you pass your one semester PE class, you're gonna get a half credit.
So when you pass your year-long English class, you have earned one credit.
So here's a quick breakdown of the credits required to graduate. Remember, you'll need 24.
So please pay attention. This is important.
You'll need...
Four English credits.
Three math credits.
Three science credits.
Three social studies credits.
One CTE credit.
Two art credits.
Two health and fitness credits.
Four general elective credits.
Two world language credits.
Or personalized pathway requirement credits. That was a lot.
We know. But the staff here will make sure you're on top of the day. And when you pass your classes this year, you'll have earned six of your 24 credits and be right on track for graduation. But that also means if you fail a class...
You may have to take summer school.
Or a zero or eighth hour. Or online classes. So make sure you pass your classes the first time so you don't have to take them the second year.
So that is basically the middle part of the video that students will watch. It's about an eight-minute video, and it also gets them excited for high school, we hope. So that's our first introduction to the students. They will obviously learn more throughout this year. And then our next steps. We have reached out to community members and also our Public Affairs Office to figure out what are the existing community groups that we can ask to be entered on their agenda so that we can share information with them so that it can be spread throughout the community. We think that going out in the community to share this information will be more effective than asking parents to come here. So we are looking for those groups that exist to get our information on their agenda so that that information can be spread to parents throughout the community. We are also working on creating an infographic to send home to parents also that gives them more information. So this is a taste of what is to come. We want to break down the information in greater detail and give them an idea of Phase 2 and Phase 3 as we continue through the school year. And then we also are looking to use social media. So there is a button already on the PSD website. It's a Ready for 24 button. This is on that. The video will be uploaded to that as soon as it's ready, and all of our communication will be added to that Ready for 24 button. We're also looking at hopefully doing weekly updates on Facebook, and those updates will come from the progress of our interventions team and our master schedule team. I think that that's it for us.
I had a question.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not on there yet. That flyer will be added to the website along with the video.
Correct, yes.
And then I know you guys have been working on a lot of different... I don't know what's being implemented, more periods at the beginning or end of the day, beyond zero and 7:00. I don't know. Is that kind of summary showing new opportunities available for the kids and family gonna be part of those flyers or on another spot on this website?
So new opportunities just clear in terms of interventions that are gonna be offered this year for those freshmen?
I don't know what new opportunities we're providing this year.
So yeah, and as...
A summary of what they are, though.
Right, as we do solidify those offerings for students and interventions that will be in place this year, that will be included in that communication, absolutely. And so everything that we create and send out, we're also gonna make sure that we put on the website. And copies of these should be coming for each of you.
I think having a paper copy out to the parents right in the beginning is really great, because I think, you know, having it, because a lot of them don't look at the computer.
Right.
Kids do, but I think them having a paper copy and having that, I think that's top notch. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. I really like the collaboration. I think I'd like to see more of that in our district as far as among teachers, administrators, students. I think that's good for our community. You know, obviously you're gonna have rivalries to some extent between schools, but the more collaboration that we can do, I think that's a really positive thing as far as the community feel for our schools and our school districts, so thank you.
Yeah, all the work is wonderful. Love the online. I'm a parent who uses online all the time, so so grateful for that. And then I just think this is great, that you're getting this information out. It's really important. We definitely don't want our graduation rates to fall because of these two extra credit requirements, so thank you for all the work you've done.
And we wanted to have perfect timing with the mailer, and Raul got his letter as well for his son that's starting this year, so it was fantastic. And in answer to your question, we have Casey Benyon, who's going to speak to what's happening with interventions this year.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So I appreciate the fact that you talked about collaboration and how that important, how that is so important for our teachers to be doing. So the good news is, is they've spent a lot of time together, both high schools, working this summer, talking about a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And really, that is the most important intervention that we'll put in place for all of our students, is ensuring that we're gonna teach to the standards, we're gonna give the kids the curriculum they need, and then we're gonna make sure that they learn at the highest levels, but we're also gonna make sure we provide the supports along the way to ensure that they all get it, and the intervention's in place when they don't. So we have, unfortunately, we have hundreds of students in our district that have come to us at the ninth grade level that are below grade level in reading and math, and so we are gonna work on some very intensive reading and math classes. The most talked about one is English Language Arts, and that class serves as reading support. And then they will also get some master student strategies so they can ensure that they're able to navigate high school and then life after high school. We also have a group of students whose skills are a little bit weaker than that, and so we'll be putting in place some Read 180 for those students and some Math 180 for those students. And then, of course, we have Avid strategies and Avid classes for students that have, don't have firsthand college experience or don't live with parents that have firsthand college experience, and so we have numerous classes where Avid is available for them. We have decided this year to offer some after-school tutoring to students who may need some extra time and support on a daily basis. And so along with Saturday school, we can have teachers really say to kids, "I need you to come tomorrow. I need you to come after school so I can teach you this again. I need you to come tomorrow so we can have time to make up that work or that assignment." Or to make sure that they're learning the standards that they need to. So a real more immediacy with the kids, so they don't get too far behind. We have been asking the district counselors to come together numerous times last year to work on and prepare high school and beyond documents, and Mr. Thomas is gonna share a little bit more information about that with you. But really, it's to ensure that they get the best that they can out of high school and then are ready for whatever life looks like for them after high school. We are building numerous credit, cross-credit opportunities for kids, true two-for-one classes, where kids sit in one class and earn an art credit. We have fashion marketing, where kids earn an art credit and at the same time they earn an occupational credit. So we are putting those into place so students can be prepared. And then dual-credit options with college and the high school. So we have currently an amazing agreement with Central Washington University, and then Tech Prep, of course, with Columbia Basin College, where hundreds of students are able to take classes at their home high school and earn college credit, saving families thousands of dollars in college classes and college textbooks. So we also have time set aside this fall to take a proposal to Labor Management to work on the advisory program for the 17th and 18th school year, and both schools are creating common classroom expectations and a building-wide expectation, and those proposals will be submitted to Labor Management for our continued PBIS interventions this fall. So that's what we've been working on, lots of things to ensure all kids make it.
Thanks, Ms. Benyon. I had a question. With this new, with these new interventions here, have we created more procedures to ensure that there is additional conversations happening with both parents and with the students consistently so that all kids, you know, if they miss a credit or two in a certain year, you're gonna, there's a checklist that says, hey, I'm gonna go talk to the parent or guardian and the student and have these conversations, talk about these interventions, and make sure that... How do you ensure that it gets implemented?
I appreciate that. That's a great question. Those are some of the things that we've been talking about this summer. I wouldn't say all of our proposals are submitted and ready to go, but we do, I mean, we have great support teams in both buildings where those conversations can happen frequently. We have lots of support staff to help with those interventions, and we hope to have more people onboard with ensuring that parents know when their kids are behind and what to do to help them, or what to do to ensure that we help them to make sure they get there.
I think that's one of the most important things, and I don't know if it's parents' or guardians' responsibilities or, you know, in the past, but we've heard, you know, blame going around, and some parents will come and say, "I didn't know my kid was so far behind." And I know in the past you guys have had, you know, I don't know if you call them procedures or what, to get in touch with parents or guardians, but just to make sure that it's implemented consistently across the district will be a great thing.
Absolutely. And those post-high school plans Mr. Thomas are gonna talk about should have a lot of that parent communication, too. Okay? Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to know a little bit about your after-school tutoring. Is it gonna be, going to be like a lab, or are there certain teachers that are going to stay after once a week?
That is a great question. So we've just kind of been blessed with the opportunity to create that. We're hoping three or four teachers would get the opportunity to stay after school. Ninth-grade-specific teachers get to stay after school to work on those kids and ensure...
So this is just for the ninth grade then?
No.
Oh, okay.
It could be open to more, but right now that is really, that's the focus. This is the group that needs 24 credits, and we cannot let them fail. And so, not that we want the other kids to fail either, but we have to make sure these kids pass and meet standard, and we have to do the best we can every day for these. So that's where the focus will be right now, and of course, any student that wants to stay after school is always welcome. Buildings are always open.
So will it be just in those specific teachers' classrooms?
No, we'd like to open up a bit... Not all those details are worked out yet, but we would like to open up a bigger facility like the library where two or three teachers could be in there working with kids and tutors. We are in the works, yes. I don't know that we'll have this ready by Wednesday, but we'll have it ready very soon.
Yeah, there's probably not a lot of kids with homework on Wednesday.
Good, yes, right.
Ms. Benyon, my understanding is that there's already some of that in place, right? I mean, there are both schools, there are teachers that stay after school during the week and some Saturdays. I know it's a little bit different at each school, but there's already some of that in place, right? It's not like the kids haven't been able to access extra tutoring or help after school or even on some Saturdays. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, yeah.
You're just expanding it?
We're just expanding it.
This might be jumping the gun. I don't know if this is a question for you or something, but I was wondering about certificates. What certificates? Some of our kids just really don't want to go to college. They are just set to have a career right out of high school. And I talked to one young man who had got, I don't even know how he did it, but he had received a forklift certificate and was able to get a great-paying job right out of high school. And I remember asking him, but I can't. Anyway, how many, do you guys do that forklift? Is that a Tri-Tech thing? How many certificates like that? I know we talked to Mr. Satal last week, and he talked to us about a certificate that they're doing with that amazing microscope that they have there, that they can get paid really well if they're certified and how to use that. I just wanted to know what else we have available.
Okay, so I appreciate that, because in the grand scheme of things, we'd love to have a guidebook that explains all of those things, and on the website, we'd love to have references for all of that information, because they're out there. Tri-Tech offers numerous opportunities, and so does CBC, and so our kids have lots of opportunities, but you're right, we don't have, yet, we don't have them all in one place, so we can make sure that every kid knows what the opportunities are. So that's something we're definitely striving for.
Okay, so you don't, so there are some available, but you don't know what's available?
Correct. I can't tell you right this minute, but I could get back with you on that.
Yeah, I would love that. It's just, I would love to see what we have available, and that would be so great to have it somewhere.
Be in a guidebook, yes.
Yeah, just so that kids who are like, "I am really not going to college, gotta support, you know, I'm gonna help support my family," or "I just hate school," you know, what's available to those kids. So that's great, thank you.
So we have our outrageous outcome that kids are, that you alluded to, I think, that kids are on track for graduation after ninth grade. They have their six credits, so that the class of 2021 can get their 24 credits. Have we added anything for this upcoming school year to ensure that there is some conversation going on with parents and the students of each of our 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students that are not on track to graduate with whatever their requirements are, so that that conversation happens early in the year, and the parents really know where their student stands, the student knows where they stand, and they can also have this conversation about available interventions?
Right, so I can speak to what we do at Chihuahua, and I'm pretty sure Pasco High does the same thing, but we have teams of vice principals, a couple counselors that are working with those grade levels, a student achievement specialist that's working with those grade levels, and so yes, those conversations are happening. Could we always be better? Yes, we could always be better at those. Does information go out? Yes, it goes out to parents to tell them an update of how many credits their kids have and how on track they are for graduation, but absolutely, we could be better at having those conversations.
So you said the information goes out, but do we have a one-on-one conversation where the parents sit down and actually understand? Because sending information to somebody through the mail or emailing or leaving a phone message is not the same as actually sitting down and saying, "Here's where your student's at. Here's the available interventions. Here's what we're gonna do for them, and here's what you can do for them." That's what I'm looking for, is to ensure that that conversation's happening.
So something like a student-led conference where kids are sitting down with their parents, and that's an excellent idea. No, we don't have that in place yet, but I know those conversations have been had. Yeah, it's a great suggestion. All right. Would you like me to introduce Mr. Brian Thomas? Excellent. Mr. Brian Thomas is a counselor at Chihuahua High School and will be talking to you a little more about... Am I supposed to push a button?
Good. It's over there on the right side.
Okay. Talk to you a little bit more about the Comprehensive Guidance System. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Just in talking more about the Comprehensive Guidance System, so as counselors within the district at the two high schools and with the middle schools, we have been meeting since April to try and figure out how to make a more comprehensive, structured program so we can give all our students the same information. We're trying to align ourselves with the national model through the American Counselor or School Counselor Association, which really focuses on three areas for the students, the social, emotional, the academic, and the career. We're hoping to really target the academic and the career through our advisories. Plans are in place that are gonna go before the Labor Management Committee next week, and so those really address helping students identify their career, their post-high school plans, understand what classes they need to take to really improve their chances on getting into those post-high school plans. And then the last part was, we took the Healthy Use Survey that all the eighth graders did last year and identified the top four areas of concerns as identified by the students. So that was drug and alcohol use, suicide prevention, bullying, and anxiety. And so as a group, we are getting together to try and identify what lessons we can present to the ninth graders throughout the year for the whole district to really address those areas and help our students get some information in terms of those.
What was that, what was that survey called?
The Healthy Youth.
Is that the first time it's been administered?
No, it's administered every two years.
Okay, and it's only eighth graders, or it's...
Eighth, tenth, and there is some twelfth, eighth, tenth, twelfth, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's great. I didn't know, I didn't even know of that. So that's something I guess parents don't get results of, or...
I'm not sure how that goes on.
We don't get specific kid results back. We get school results back, and district results and county results.
Okay, do you gauge it to see if they're, I mean, if they're getting healthier or not, or is it... I mean, that's hard, because that's not really a personal thing. I think, I think a lot of youth issues come from home, not from school, but are you able to help those kids? That's, that's really cool.
Well, that's the big piece we're trying to focus on, is utilizing that, to see what the needs of our students are, so we can really try and target and address those needs.
Okay, cool.
Question for you.
Yep.
So anyway, the... How often do you guys meet with students? Do you guys, does every ninth grader, will they get a visit with a counselor sometime during the year, multiple times during the year, or is this just as they need it?
To this point, it's kind of varied, based on need. There are certain things we do as a counseling staff where we go out into the classrooms, talk to ninth graders, but that's why we're trying to go to a more comprehensive, structured model, so we can give the students the same information as we go along. Through the advisory, I know currently, students, if they come in with questions about career and post-high school plans, they get, you may get more the more you come to see me as a counselor, but through these advisories, we really have a structured program for giving our students the same curriculum.
So it's, it's gonna be incumbent on the student to come in and say, "Look, I'm, I'm in ninth grade, three years I'm gonna be out of here, I don't know what I'm gonna do, can you help me out?"
Currently, it's, or in years past, it's kind of been that way. We've gone out and we've given them information within the classrooms when we do registrations and those types of things, or if we go into a classroom and a teacher asks for a lesson, but this will make it more structured throughout the year. All students will get the same information at the same times. Thank you.
Do we have, and I've asked this in the past and I can't remember the answer, sorry, do we have career counselor at each high school, a designated career counselor?
A guidance specialist who kind of helps with scholarships and some of the post-high school stuff that gets taken care of, but not necessarily a person who's just strictly doing career curriculum.
Career center or anything?
That would be, each of the individual counselors does that information with their caseloads.
And you're over one grade level, aren't you?
Correct.
So what, this year, what grade level are you over?
I'm sophomores this year.
Okay.
So I'm not recommending this or asking for, but when I went to, when I went to high school quite a long time ago, we had a career center at our school where there was a designated career counselor, and each grade level had specified stuff they looked at, like freshmen, you know, surveys to figure out what you're interested, what you might be good at, sophomores to do this, juniors to start thinking about scholarships, seniors to do something, and you'd visit as a class or as an advisory that career counselor, you know, a couple times a year to kind of help guide it. It's, I'm not saying it's something we should or need to do, but it's an option.
And, and that's exactly what we've done with the advisories, is those, each school has kind of developed their own advisory curriculum, but it walks students through that starting process of entrance inventories into what I'm interested in, and then for these careers, what are the schooling options available? What do I need to do to get in those schools? So it kind of walks them through that whole process, all the way through financial aid, or if you're going into apprenticeships, how do you apply at those apprenticeships? What are the contact numbers? So that through the advisories, we've really kind of broken that down in a building block from ninth grade up through their senior year, so when they graduate, they're jumping right into whatever they want to do.
So who presents that? The advisory teacher that has a different subject area, and so you get what you get from your advisory teacher, or is there one designated presenter at a school?
There would be an advisory teacher that would be assigned a certain amount of students, and those lessons are developed for all those teachers, so all they have to do is look over the lesson ahead of time, just present it to their group, and then all the students are getting the exact same information.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. You're getting a lot of questions. You're doing great. This is an area I think that we really, I'd love to see this progress, you know, as I visit schools, this is an issue even at the elementary level, middle school level, high school level, and let's be honest, it really comes down to overcrowding. We have too many students per counselor, per school, per administrator, per teacher, and we just cannot, we have to use the resources and, you know, so we address the most urgent needs. And so, and I'm just speaking for myself now, I'm not speaking for the whole board, but this is an area I'd like to see us really focus on when it comes to our budgeting. We've talked, we've kind of changed the model a little bit with budgeting, and... And if, I think we really need to devote more resources to counselors at all of our schools. We've talked about social workers possibly at some schools, but there, we need to have some mechanism, I feel, in place where kind of, a couple board members have touched on it, where really every single student needs to meet with someone, like in eighth grade, and really plan out like, okay, where you add and, and nothing holds a student to like, "I'm doing this, this is in stone." But let's have a plan. They understand, they meet with someone, they, the parent, the student, a counselor, maybe it's a teacher. I don't know how you do it. I think we're trying lots of things and so many, I know a lot of people want to see something like this happen, but it's just so challenging because, you know, we just have so many students and a limited number of resources. But, you know, whether that's like a student being assigned to teacher, there are teachers that are in the CTE area also meeting with students and parents, so it's not just the counselors meeting with 600 stu-, I mean, it's just impossible, right? But I really feel that as a board, we, and again, this, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not, this isn't a directive, but I feel that we should devote a lot more resources to this because every student deserves to have a meeting and, and resources and that conversation. But when we're limited, we, obviously, we address the ones that are struggling, that we know that are struggling. But really, we want to get to where every student's able to discuss where they want to go, how we're gonna get there. And we need more counselors in our elementary schools so that they can provide some of the teaching and the interventions and the prevention. And we just don't have the resources yet. And so I'm really hopeful that we can commit more to that to provide the support for our teachers, the administrators, and most importantly, the students, obviously.
No, I definitely think through the advisory, it kind of spreads some of that. So everyone has a piece in it, more of a team approach to working with the students. I think it gives our teachers good information about what post-high school plans are, what our kids are looking at. And so it helps direct them to what types of things they want to teach to their students, helps the students connect. What am I learning? How is that gonna affect me in the future? Why do I need these types of things?
Yeah, I think there's, I think you have made progress because if it's any indication, I asked our student representatives about this after our last meeting and the ones that were seniors were like, "Eh eh eh." And then our junior representative was like, that's a junior, she's like, "Oh yeah, I had that." And we, you know, so I think we're making progress. And an example is also the kindergarten family connection meetings. I mean, I really think that should occur every year. You know, you have a new teacher, new student, it's just everyone scared and nervous. And I'd love to have that type of experience for each of my children every year as they have a new teacher that, that, you know, as parent, child, student, teacher, they sit down and talk for 15, 20 minutes, get to know each other. I just, I just, I think if we can find a way to do that, it'll just make a dramatic effect on our success.
Definitely.
So is this brand new this year?
Pasco High has been doing some of this over the last couple years. Chihuahua is hoping, hoping to implement it this year, starting.
Do you think with this new, are you able to, I mean, I'm figuring you what, have 650, 700 students?
As a grade level?
Yes.
Yes, we have, I think, 700 at my grade level and there's two counselors.
Okay, and there's two counselors over each grade level?
Correct.
I know I've met with you before at some point.
I think I had one of your sons, Steven, before.
You had Steven. Okay, I was trying to figure out why the thing, which one you had, but yes. And, and anyway, and all my kids and other counselors, they've all met with them on multiple occasions. Are you able to see all of those 700 kids in a year?
You are able to see them, it's just, yeah, it's just the amount of time. And I think through this advisory, that really helps us structure that time a little bit better. So when students come in with issues or things they want, they already have information. And so it makes that time more structured where we can really dig into what they actually need help with.
So you're excited about this or?
Oh, I'm super excited about it. I think, I, nothing upsets me more than when I see a student after they graduate and I'm like, "What are you doing?" And they don't really, "Ah, I've been sitting at home" or "I've been working at Lowe's." They don't really have a career plan in place. And I think this really steps that up and gets us in the right direction.
Great. Well, I'm excited about it. It sounds really good. Has it been successful at Pasco High School? Is that why it's being implemented at Chihuahua? Have they really liked it? Have they seen good results?
I think they've seen good results. I, we have a couple of the people here who work with their advisory and so.
We're probably getting too much into the weeds, but this is really exciting. There's lots of really fun things to.
Right. And I don't think it's a matter of us waiting on it. We've wanted to do it. It's just something we've been building and trying to make sure we get it right. So when we implement it, it's the best possible.
I can talk to them about that a little later because I'm sure we need to move on.
So just for clarity, this is a topic.
Oh, sorry.
This is a topic at the Labor Management Meeting on August 30th. So there'll be some PSD, PAE conversation about what implementation looks like. So that we're clear with what the process.
So this is a bargaining topic and we're not allowed to talk about it? Is that what?
Well, I don't know that you're not allowed to talk about it. I don't, I don't, I don't know that that's what I'm saying, but I do, we are. I don't, I don't want the message to be that we're doing this, that it's being implemented. We are in the process of having conversation around what implementation would look like.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Can I just say though, I really like the message that you guys are giving.
So, so if I could, this is Sally Wright. She, Greg Olson, you will be on the consent agenda tonight. Greg Olson's resignation from his position as PAE president is on the consent agenda this evening. Given that that gets approved, he will be a PE teacher at Captain Gray, starting on the first day of school. And this is Sally Wright, who is our current PAE president. As of your acceptance of Greg's resignation, will be the PAE president moving forward. So she's speaking in her new role as PAE president, correct?
Congratulations, Sally.
And member of the committee.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Sally. We're really excited for you.
I didn't expect to speak, but I wanted to let you know that I appreciate what you're saying. Because you, it sounds like you feel like this is just as important as we do. And so we're gonna work together to figure out a way to make this happen. We're gonna work together.
So can I, I just want to make a comment. Is this working?
Is this thing on?
It's not nearly as loud as that. So, anyway, it just seems that, so we've got counselors working on this. And I, I mean, I've got two kids that just recently graduated from high school. I shouldn't say recently. I mean, within the last four or five years, but, but I'm not sure what they're gonna do and I'm not sure they are either. And I just think it needs, this is something that we don't just leave to counselors. Every teacher in the district should be saying, "Look, someday you're gonna leave here and you need a job." And so pay attention and learn something and start thinking about it. Maybe you do. I'm not saying you don't. But it just, the, the whole paradigm could shift and not just get to graduation, but once graduation's done, you need to do something.
I agree with what Mr. Christensen said. It's a, it's a culture. It's not just our counselors. It's not just a couple people in the district, but it's a culture we're trying to build.
Definitely.
So certainly, the advisory concept like Mr. Thomas is explaining moves us in the direction of that culture change because each individual teacher has a group of kids that are assigned to them. And so it exactly does that, that we all have a piece in graduation, right? We all own it the moment those kids are walking across the stage on, and we get to shake their hands, but it's a celebration for all of us that were involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next I'd like to introduce Julia Dudley from Pasco High School and Maria Whitby. And they've been leading the work with the master scheduling work group.
And I'm from Chihuahua. Just thought I'd throw that in there. All right, we are planning to implement a trimester schedule in the 2018, 2019 school year. We conducted a staff survey, including both comprehensive high schools in June. The majority of the staff supported the change. Our previous community forums expressed a desire for increased career-minded opportunities at the high school level. Through research and many collaborative discussions, we found that the trimester, trimester master schedule model had the greatest opportunities for our students and staff.
Trimesters will allow our students to earn 30 credits during their time in school. This allows students the flexibility to be able to personalize their high school experience, to meet their educational needs, and take more specialized classes that align with their post-high school goals. To support this change, we have been working with the association to ensure that this transition occurs smoothly with minimal financial impact for the district. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
How do you get to 30?
So it's, there's five classes, three terms each year. So seven and a half credits a year for four years is 30.
So five classes, three terms. So if they take English, so each, each class would still be a half a credit then? Okay, so they'd only have to take English two semesters and then they'd have their semester, or sorry, trimester. Then they'd have a third trimester that they could take an elective?
Right.
Sounds lovely. Right, there's gotta be a catch. So is there more work that's crammed into a smaller time? Are we just thinking we're more efficient? Do we extend the school day and the class hours and take away lunch and other? Like, how does that practically occur? And is this something that other schools are doing, have done? Is this where kind of the, I'm sure you guys know or are aware of, is this something that's most schools do in our state or are looking at doing in our state with this change?
This is something that many other districts are looking at, at moving to. What happens is that rather than taking six periods a day, they take five. So class periods do get longer, which allows for more deeper learning during the class period. You would have to kind of change the curriculum to align to a shorter timeline as well.
So do we have seniors that don't even need any more credits to graduate and they're just staying home?
Well, we have actually a little bit of that right now. We have, you know, students who go ahead and get 22 credits even before their senior year. So that's part of this planning process to figure out, you know, what we do with certain courses so that we encourage our students to take more classes or to take different classes that will set them in a different pathway. Whether they want to do, go to college or do something technical after. So it's creating more opportunity in this trimester schedule to hopefully encourage these kids into a certain pathway.
And I think this opens opportunities for internships, mentorships, other things that students could complete during their senior year. It gives us an opportunity to go from you have to stay here to you want to stay here because we're offering you things that are gonna really benefit you long-term.
So, I, I have heard of other districts doing this and I had some friends that were looking into it in other districts a couple years ago, much like you guys were. I'm guessing that you have, you have fewer class hours for a given credit. You know, whatever, if you're spending 1X right now to earn a credit, now you're gonna be spending like 0.8X or something like that. So in order to learn the same amount on that subject or to meet your standards that you're required to do, are we thinking that we're gonna cut out stuff that shouldn't, are we gonna be more efficient as teachers? Or the, the kids are gonna focus more? Because there's gonna be less class time to learn the same amount of materials in order to fit that in. What, what do we do to make that work?
I think our goal is to align to the standards as closely as possible. Try and work with the time that we have to make sure that we're preparing them for the next class or whatever their next step is in life. We, we will have to scale some things down. So we can't do everything, but we're gonna basically try to prioritize and do the things that will make them successful for the next step.
So we're gonna sharpen the pencil and be a little bit more efficient in our, in our class day so that we're, we're teaching the standards that we need our kids to learn in order to succeed. Okay, thank you.
I love this. I love the comments you both made about, you know, the expanding the opportunity, the more personalization. I think that's where we're really going. I've always thought that that's like the biggest challenge in public school in general is really adapting to each child, you know, what, what they want, what they need. I think that's the biggest struggle. If you have 25 kids, you know, how do you adapt to all the students' abilities and needs? What are the kind of basic cons of this or what resistance or, you know, to making this type of a change? What, what are the basic disadvantages?
I think it's, it's time in general, you know, figuring out how productive we can be with our time. Some teachers are possibly looking at it thinking, "Wait, how do I take this much and put it into this much amount of time and change that?" And that's something that we will have to tackle and we will have to get those details down so that we are sharpening the pencil, so that we are teaching exactly what our students need to know. So that's probably the biggest obstacle because people want to know what they're going to be doing with that amount of time and taking that time to make sure that we are giving our students everything they need to go on to the next step.
So I think another thing, and Mrs. Binion touched on this, we've got students coming in that aren't prepared. So it's imperative that we have students coming in that are prepared so that we're not having to take time to teach them what they should have learned in the previous class or grade or whatever it is. And I think it's, it will force us to be more efficient, which is a good thing. You know, and then there's probably some creative ways that we can do that, but that's, that's not all bad. I like this. It gives them options. We're, with the 24-credit model, then you have, you can't, not that you would fail a class, but your class, your, your schedule is lined out for you. You get two electives and the rest of it is, is already there. So I, I think this is a great idea.
Are we still gonna offer when we go to trimesters, some kind of zero hour and six hour, six hour, something like that?
Those decisions haven't been made. They'll be made collaboratively in the next year, but I think our intention is to continue to offer those options.
And with that, I'd be curious if, if a kid was to take additional zero hour, six, and pass all their classes, they're gonna be getting nine credits or something a year. They could knock out all their credits in three years or less than three years. Are we allowing kids to go to, you know, for those that collect all their credits and go to a zero or a sixth, a fifth, six hour? Are they gonna be able to graduate in three years?
So the likelihood is they might have 24 credits, but they probably won't have the right credits to graduate. Our students that are highly involved in music right now hit the 22-credit mark far before they graduate. But they don't have the English credits that they need senior year or other credits throughout the, the years that they would need.
If there's only one or two, like an English credit, would we allow them to take junior and senior English in, in one year? Because there's not really, it's not really a prerequisite. Is it a prerequisite? We're gonna have to set that up for them and, and be able to justify why junior English is a prerequisite for senior English. I mean, it's, those will be interesting things to look at, I think.
Important considerations.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you hear about athletes, some people that are, that play hockey, they graduate in three years and you're like, "How do they do that?" You've got all these requirements. I'm sure there must be a way that they get to it, but it, like you said, it gets tricky probably with that. I want to comment on something Mr. Christensen said that I, that I agree with that, because months ago, we looked at middle school math and like algebra credit. And if you, if, when you look at like the number of students that passed, it was quite low compared to like those. And so we, you know, I know they're, they're still looking at this, but I think it came down to like placement of students that if, if students are placed appropriately, which in this model, they probably, it'd be even more important that people are in the right class so that you're not, like Mr. Christensen said, you know, reviewing so much. Try to get everyone on the same level. You really need to be prepared and it's not gonna be something where everyone can just take what they want. We really have to zone in on that and make sure that people are appropriately placed and not just because like, "I want to take an AP class" or, you know, "I hope I can do it."
Limitless possibilities with this.
Yeah, there is. Yeah. So if I could just connect a couple dots to while we're talking about. So what, what we're talking about here is the range of options for kids nine through 12. You as a board have provided us guidance around the five outrageous outcomes that are really a seamless system to, to set kids up for success, to participate in this kind of a structure by making sure that they're reading on grade level by third grade, passing math by, by the, by the ninth grade, et cetera. That fits directly into some work around a seamless set of interventions that Eric Bowles is working on. And those are kind of the pieces that we started talking about last board meeting around those things that are available for students from the core to running start or college credits. Next board meeting, Mr. Bowles will be doing a presentation that's about what happens for those students who need additional support to learn the standards, kind of from the core to the special education on that side of the continuum. So I just kind of wanted to put that context out there that, you know, we've talked about what to do from the core to running start and now where this initiative may fit. And the next time you'll hear what's gonna happen for the kids that maybe need more support to meeting the standards. So it absolutely speaks to what you were talking about in terms of preparation. And I just wanted to point out how kind of all of those, those dots connect to the leadership that we got from you as board members around our outrageous outcomes. So you're starting to see how this whole system approach to supporting kids in Pasco is coming together in a really powerful way that is very heavily based on the teacher voice. So I think we're just really excited about the opportunity and appreciate the board's leadership with the outrageous outcomes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just in conclusion, I think what we really wanted to highlight is we're making every effort to engage and involve staff as much as possible into this discussion. And this Thursday, we will have a joint meeting of Pasco High staff with Chihuahua High School staff so that we can provide an update, be really thoughtful about our information, what was accomplished over the summer. And also, we are trying to be very intentional about getting their feedback, input, and questions to help us guide us as we are shaping our proposals and moving forward. We really want this to be slow and we want to make sure that we are working closely in partnership with PAE and making sure, and I can honestly say that this team, we really want everything we decide to do. say, that this team, we really want everything we decide to do have a direct correlation to making a difference for kids. This isn't just one initiative, it's many, and bottom line, and we have very passionate conversations, is how is this really going to transform a secondary education experience for each of our kids? And next steps, so as I mentioned, we're going to have a large presentation with both staff on Thursday. You're welcome to join us at the Red Line in the afternoon. We will be hopefully meeting regularly with Superintendent Whitney's Student Advisory Council, as well as student leadership teams. We're trying to reach out to all stakeholders. Again, I just wanted to thank the team for all their hard work this summer, and continuing into the next year, we're going to stick with the same meeting structures, so that teachers know what's coming, and predictable way to share their questions and concerns. And it's all about, again, lasting change for success for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Before we leave into comments, I just also wanted to kind of put an asterisk on the schedule. Any changes to working conditions are mandatory, subject to bargain. So, once the workaround, the trimester schedule has been solidified with this working group, it'll go through, through the same processes I mentioned for advisory. It'll come to Labor Management. There'll be collaborative PAE/PSD conversation around analysis for impact working conditions, if there are. Those will need to be bargained, so I just wanted to make sure we're clear, that the recommendation will come. It still has a layer of process to go through before final implementation.
I, I just want to thank you for this work. I just feel like we're, we're doing some amazing things in Pasco, and, and I realize this was probably a lot of work for each of these individual committees and these teachers, and we are so grateful for what you've done. This is exciting. Everything we talked about today was exciting, and, and you know, we're getting to that point where we will have this world-class learning environment, and, and I think that Pasco is, is going to be a beacon out there, you know, a lighthouse for others. And, and so, thank you for your work and all that you've done, and for getting our students to where they need to be with these new legislative changes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Thank you to all the staff. Thanks for the work you guys have done. As you can see, the board, I think you heard everybody here say we're pretty excited about not only increasing the opportunities for our students to succeed with the 24-credits, but also the additional opportunities with interventions and, and the interactions that will allow our, not only our ninth graders, although that's our outrageous outcome, but all, all grade levels to be on track for graduation, and we thank you guys for all the work that you do. Join us for a regularly scheduled board meeting at 6:30 if you're still around. Thank you.
Thank you.